Good evening, welcome to the 1,228th Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda that involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council will hold their own public hearing and make their final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. Planning Commission will hold the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition is requesting a waiver of use, which we have all three of them tonight, and is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dinaro.
Here.
Mr. Bongero is absent. Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Droz is absent. Mr. Ventura.
Is here.
Karen Magna is here. Chairman Wolschow.
Is here. And also with us tonight, we have Jacob Ujazi and Stephanie Reese, both from our Planning Department, and they will be giving us background information on these petitions as we go forward. With that, we're going to start with petition number one, or item number one, on the public hearing section of our agenda.
Petition 2025-02-02-06 submitted by NC Designers and Contracting requesting waiver use approval under Sections 3.11 and 6.06 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended to construct a 2,117 square foot full-service oil change facility at 27410 Joy Road located on the northwest corner of Joy Road and Inkster Road in the southeast quarter of Section 36.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Ujazi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a request to construct a full-service oil change establishment with three bay doors. The site is currently zoned C2 and sits vacant. The location is on the northwest corner of Joy Road and Inkster Road with plans showing a proposed 2,100 square foot building on a .34 acre site. The plans show the building to be 17 feet from the right-of-way complying with the zoning ordinance setbacks. And according to the Livonia zoning ordinance, outdoor storage of any disabled, damaged, or unlicensed vehicles is prohibited under this waiver use. The plan does not show any proposed areas for excess vehicles. The site is at the corner of three other municipalities. To the east is a mobile gas station across Inkster Road in Redford Township. To the south is a vacant site across Joy Road in the city of Westland, along with a lawn and snow equipment shop. To the southeast, there is also a Speedway gas station at the corner of the intersection with the city of Dearborn Heights. To the north is a vacant wooded parcel, zoned C2, general business, and to the west is a vacant site, zoned C2 as well. The proposal would have access, proposed access, in two driveways, one off of Inkster Road and one from Joy Road. As of now, I've not seen any changes from the, what we saw at the study station of the location of the drives. As I mentioned, all building setbacks meet the zoning ordinance requirements. And the parking, for the parking, the site plan shows three proposed parking spots with one being an ADA accessible space, which are all located along Joy Road. The ordinance requires two parking spaces for every repair bay plus one for each employee, which is a total of eight parking spaces. But since this is not an automobile repair shop, patrons will be inside their vehicles during their oil change. The parking, the only parking spaces will be for employees. The petitioner states that two employees will be on the site. According to the ITE parking generation standards, the parking rate for a quick lube, lubrication vehicle shop is generally considered to be one-to-one, meaning one parking space is needed per car that comes in for an oil change. That would be three spots required with, for the three bays. The spaces are clearly marked, but they are not double striped and would need to be updated in the final plan. The floor plan shows three proposed bays, a storage room, mechanical equipment room, a lobby with cashier, and unisex bathroom. The landscape plan shows that landscaping requirements along Joy and Inkster Road both comply with the zoning ordinance. The planting show, a planting height at 20, or the plan shows a planting height at 24 inches of landscaping along the corner of Inkster and Joy, which also complies with the landscaping requirements of the ordinance. The elevation plans show a dark gray-black brick facade with silver metal cap atop the building, and EFS materials are shown on the building sides between the windows and the parapet. Surrounding the main entrance of the front elevation are red panels. The three bays would utilize a total of six 10-foot overhang doors facing Inkster Road. The dumpster is shown on the plan to be a 10-by-10 dumpster enclosure located in the site's northwest corner behind the building. The plan shows the dumpster enclosure to be constructed out of concrete with a brick finish. The brick veneer finish should match the primary building color. The plans did not include any stormwater or drainage plans. A photometric plan was submitted with showing up to 5.1-foot candles along the property lines to the north. The ordinance discourages the adverse effects of inappropriate lighting. And the plans show a proposed monument sign at the corner of Inkster Road and Joy Road, but no sizes are listed on the submitted plans. They are allowed one ground sign not to exceed 30 square feet in area and 6 feet in height with a minimum setback of 10 feet from any of the right-aways. And with that, Mr. Chair, I have some correspondence I can read.
Yes, please.
In accordance with your requests, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time, but would like to note the following items. One, the subject parcel is assigned the address 27410 Joy Road. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact the department once approvals have been obtained. The existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Sanitary Sewer and Water Main. Based on the submitted drawings, we have the following comments. Sanitary sewer: The drawings do not include a basis of design for the proposed sanitary sewers, but we do not believe the proposed use will create a negative impact on the existing system. It should be noted that the owner will need to clean and televise the existing lead to ensure that it is still in serviceable condition if they wish to reuse it for the new building. Also, stormwater: The drawings do not show any proposed stormwater improvements. It should be noted that any new developments will be required to meet the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance, including detention. Since all stormwater sewers servicing the site is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, the owner will need to submit drawings to the County Department of Public Services for approval and permitting. Three, the proposed landscape plan indicates the planting of five red maples on the site as well as flowering dogwoods. We would encourage developer to choose a tree species from our approved tree list instead of the red maples. Four, any disturbances with the Joy or Inkster right-of-way will require permits through the Wayne County Department of Public Service, including driveway approaches and sidewalk removals and placements. Five, the proposed site plan indicates a drive-through lane and dumpster enclosure under the existing power, overhead power lines. The owner will need to contact DTE for pole and line removals or revise the site plan to avoid the existing poles and move the dumpster enclosure out of the influence of the overhead lines. This is signed David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From the Fire Marshal's Office, the office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a request to construct a commercial building on property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections at this, at this time. A further detailed review will take place when the division receives an official plan set. Signed, Brian Kukula, Fire Marshal. From the Police Department, I have reviewed the plans in connection with this petition. I have no objections to the proposal. Signed, Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. From the Inspection Department, pursuant to the, to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. One, the exterior lighting must confirm to the lighting, confirm to the lighting ordinance. Lights shall be directed downward not exceeding .5-foot candles at the property line. The height of the light fixture shall not exceed 20 feet measured from the finished grade to the top of the fixture. Two, signage shall confirm to the ordinance or a variance would be required from the zoning board of appeals. This department has no further objections to the petition. Signed, Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. From the Accounting Department, I have reviewed the address connected with the above noted petition. As there are no outstanding amounts receivable, I have no objections to the proposal. This is signed Connie Kupola, Chief Accountant. And finally, from the City Treasurer's Office, on April 8, 2025, Agenda has, Agenda Item Number One has back taxes owed in the amount of $5,405.72 for 2023 and 2024. This is signed Susan Nash, City Treasurer. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ujazi. Is there any questions for staff? Oh, Mr. Long.
Jacob, we had several recommendations or action items from the study meeting. I don't see any of them incorporated here. Were there any new materials?
I have not received any new materials.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Ventura.
Jacob, I see that we talk about the landscaping here, and I'm a little confused. We say, however, there should be evergreen shrubs screening the vehicle lights from the parking lots onto Joy Road. Can you, can you point out exactly where you'd like that, those shrubs to be?
Some sort of screaming along here.
So that would be something that we'd want to add to the...
If you, yeah.
Right, okay. All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for staff? If not, our petitioner is in the audience, feel free to come to our podium. Introduce yourself. Good evening.
My name is Nasr Suhair from NC Designers and Contracting, 3241 South Telegraph, Dearborn.
Good evening, Mr. Nasr.
I just want to say, I mean, Mr. Jacob just explained everything about the whole project that we're doing, and this is a new concept that we're bringing into that corner, and it's a little bit more modern than other facilities that we added before. It combines some new material that everybody is using now, like the metal panels, mixing it with the brick and EFS, which is, we don't normally like to put on the buildings at the low portions, so we put it in an area that, like, it doesn't show much. And overall, I mean, if there is any questions, I would love to answer regarding this.
I'm sure we'll have some for you. Let's see if there's any questions for our petitioner's representative. Any questions for the petitioner? I built him up that there was a ton of questions. Mr. Ventura.
Bill, you're out here. Good evening. There are two things that I'd like to talk about. Number one, are you willing to add some shrubs to the Joy Road shrubbery line in front of the parking spaces too?
Of course, for the reason that he mentioned, for sure we'll do. I mean, to block the vehicle...
The lights from going on Joy Road. Thank you. And number two, Mr. Droz, who is not here this evening, asked at the study session if the entrance from Inkster Road could be moved north to, is that correct?
Correct. I believe we, we first mentioned something closer to where they could go directly into the dumpsters.
Right, so that it would be far enough north and so that the traffic entering and exiting onto Inkster Road would be further away from the intersection.
Yeah.
And it seemed that that would be acceptable at the study session, but I don't see the changes here. Can we institute those?
We will, we will change it. I mean, I mean, if it's, I mean, I don't know if we did, if we do the change within the week that you're gonna put it now. And, I mean, that's why probably my guys didn't submit to you the updated one, yeah. But we are willing to move that, and probably if, I mean, whatever you put in the recommendation previously, we're gonna go ahead and address the new plans that are gonna be submitted.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions?
I have a couple. There was a note that there's back taxes. Have those been taken care of yet?
So, so this is like, this is, it's a purchase, my, the client that I'm dealing with is not the original owner. He's purchasing the property, and we're trying to get like a, an exception from the city so we can close the deal on this. And of course, before we close even the deal, all these taxes have to be taken care of. Matter of fact, when you called me early today, I reached out to the owner. He was our estate, but he did call the agent regarding these taxes, so he can take care of them.
Great. The other question is on lighting. Can you, can you explain what kind of lighting you're gonna have on the site, please?
So, so the lighting on the building, there were, we call them up and down lighting, so they do not expose like straight out, they go up and down. So, there's no way, yes.
They'll be facing down.
The only, the only lighting on the, on the site that would be exposed is the pole light, which is 90-degree down, they're gonna be. And they're gonna be within the candle that we require and the city requires.
Great, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Dinaro. Any other questions? Mr. Long?
So it sounds like a lot of the changes that we discussed at the study meeting are going to be incorporated, they're just not in the presentation here. The last thing that we talked about was the dumpster being close to the power lines. And then they, at the study session, they said that they weren't interested in having to move any utility poles or anything like that, and I know that it was also mentioned, I think, in the engineering report. So, are you...
It depends, I mean, let me see where's the light pole. I mean, if there is any like electrical lines really near the dumpster, definitely either we'll move the dumpster or we have to move the pole light or electrical. But, I mean, if, it's, as long as it is within the exception, that should be not a problem.
Well, I mean, I think we're excited about this development and, but, you know, there are still a lot of changes that are going to be made to this. I think, you know, I can get behind it because it still has to go behind the City Council, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of, what we're seeing up there isn't gonna be the final product, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Yeah, I believe there's an easement on the north side, the power lines are going across where, right about where the dumpster is, so if dumpster's gonna get raised, it could potentially interfere with those power lines, so I think that was the concern.
Of course, I mean, if there is any lines that are like really close to the dumpster, definitely we have to...
Move the dumpster?
Yeah, of course.
All right, all right. Any other questions? Comments?
Unless you wanted to address the other engineering comment about the tree species.
Oh, yes, the maples. Yeah, so right now, you're showing all maples, and the, the comment from the engineer was to have a variety of species other than maples. So there's a species list that the city has. Would you be willing to take a look at that and...
Of course.
Adjust those, those tree species?
Definitely.
Okay, all right. Is there anything else from anyone on the Commission? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? There's one gentleman in the audience, Mr. Nasr, if you'd like to just sit down for one moment, we'll let the gentleman come forward and speak at our podium, and let us know his thoughts, either for or against. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm just curious what the proposed hours of operation are.
We can ask that. Can we just get your name and address for...
Oh, my name is Aaron Lipinski. I live at 8883 Inkster Road, a couple doors down, so I'm pretty close.
Sure.
I'm worried that, you know, they're gonna be working until 10 o'clock at night, or super early in the morning, so that's, that's my concern, my question.
Is there anything else you'd like to know, that way we can...
Nope, everything else sounds pretty good. I mean, we're looking to, looking forward to get something in on that corner that's been vacant for the 30 years that I've been there, but, so...
We'll try to find out that for information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anybody else. Nasr, is there anything else that you'd like to say, or do you like, do you know what the hours are gonna be?
The hours, yeah, it would be like from 8 till probably 9, not more than that. It depends if winter or summer hours, so...
Okay. All right, very good. Is there anything else that you'd like to say before we make our decision? You're all set?
I mean, we're gonna comply with whatever we talked about now, and I hope that would satisfy the Planning Commission.
Okay, very good, thank you. If there's no further discussion on this item, I'll close the public hearing, and a motion would be in order.
I would like to offer an approving resolution.
Sure, Ms. Dinaro, go ahead.
That the request to construct a 2,117 square foot full-service oil change facility at 27410 Joy Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval and the following conditions. One, that the site plan identified as sheet number SP101 dated January 13, 2025, prepared by NC Designers and Contracting, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Two, that the elevation plan identified as sheet number A201 dated January 13, 2025, prepared by NC Designers and Contracting, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Three, that the landscape plan identified as sheet number SP201 dated January 13, 2025, prepared by NC Designers and Contracting, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number four, all parking spaces except the required handicap spaces shall be double striped at 10 feet wide by 20 feet in length as required. Number five, the van-accessible barrier-free parking space shall be sized, signed, and marked in accordance with the Michigan Barrier-Free Code. Number six, that the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of material, out of building materials that shall complement that of the building. The enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel constructed, construction or durable, long-lasting, solid panel fiberglass. The trash dumpster area shall be maintained and when not in use, closed at all times. Number seven, that all light fixtures shall not exceed 20 feet in height and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. Number eight, that there shall be no outdoor storage of auto parts, equipment, scrap material, waste petroleum products, junked, unlicensed, or inoperable vehicles, or other similar items in connection with this operation. And the overhead doors, when not in use for vehicles entering or exiting the service facilities, shall always be closed. Number nine, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approved by the zoning board of appeals. Number 10, the overall average illumination level for the parking lot shall be 1.0-foot candle as provided under Section 7.22 of the zoning ordinance. 11, that unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsor vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited. Number 12, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted for the Inspection Department at the time the building permits are applied for. And 13, pursuant to Section 13.13 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
We have support from Mr. Long. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Chairman.
Ms. Dinaro?
Do we want to add the driveway move, moving...
Driveway landscaping.
And landscaping.
Yeah.
Yeah, I suspect there's a few items here that we need to make at least note of.
Right, I would agree, yeah. That's what I would ask you to...
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think moving the driveway up on Inkster and then the, the landscape, was there something else?
Two, two landscape items. One is, one is sufficient density and height of shrubs on Joy Road, and number two would be the species of trees that conform with them.
Okay, is there anything else, Mr. Karen Magna, that you had noted?
Well, we, we had some talk about the dumpster, making sure that it's clear of the wires, of course, and if not, it can always be clocked 90 degrees and come in from the other way, but, and then the taxes, I think it's pretty, pretty clear and evident that before this gets passed by City Council, these taxes will have to be squared away, so make sure it's very clear that's, that's taken care of as well.
Okay. Does that encapsulate all the items that would be adjusted in our approving resolution in terms of...
Wasn't there also an issue with the lighting? The photometric plan showed too high on the northern border.
I think that was addressed in the...
I see there already is a condition.
That was in the...
Yeah, that was number seven.
Okay, but yeah, you're right.
I did mention the sink one-foot candle.
Yeah, okay.
Good. All right, anything else that we need to incorporate in this? Not, everyone's okay with the changes as proposed? And this is gonna be a motion to approve by Dinaro and Long. If there is no further comments, if the secretary can please call the roll.
Mrs. Dinaro.
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Wolschow?
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to City Council on approving your recommendation, and we wish you luck with the project. And next, we move on to item number two on our agenda.
Petition 2025-02-02-07 submitted by Midwest Freight Storage requesting waiver use approval under Section 3.17 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance to operate outdoor truck and trailer storage at 32225 Schoolcraft Road located on the south side of Schoolcraft between Hubbard and Merriman Roads in the northeast quarter of Section 27.
Thank you. Mr. Ventura?
I have a conflict on this agenda item, and so I'm gonna recuse myself from the proceedings.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, we'll go to Mr. Ujazi to give background information on this petition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is to operate, a request to operate an outdoor truck and trailer storage facility. The property is currently zoned M2, general manufacturing. The subject property, property is 3.24 acres in area and has about 200 feet of frontage along Schoolcraft Road with a depth of approximately 712 feet. The rear of the property has another 200 feet of frontage along Industrial Road, and there is an existing one-story building, which is 21 feet high and approximately 22,677 square feet in size. The surrounding properties are M2 as well. The building currently has two tenants leasing space. Approximately 6,000 square feet of the building is used in conjunction with this proposed truck storage for offices and additional storage. Under a separate address, the remaining portion of the building is used as a caregiver grow operation. The rear of the site is currently being used for truck parking. The petitioner owns over a dozen large semi-trucks that are use, that they use the back vacant lot for parking. They will not be working on these trailers or engines at this location. This is strictly for parking in between routes for their business. They do not transport or store any hazardous or flammable goods on the site. The truck and trailer storage facilities require waiver use approval under the provision set forth in Section 3.17 of the zoning ordinance. under the provision set forth in section three point one seven of the zoning ordinance. Parking for the trucks and trailers would be allocated to two separate areas shown on the site plan. The site plan identifies one of these areas having sixteen existing truck parking spaces located at the rear of the property. And then there's a second area that is surrounded, I'm sorry, excuse me. This area is surrounded by, on three sides, by an existing six-foot-high concrete wall. Along the rear half of the eastern property line, there are an additional nine existing truck parking spaces shown. The site plan identifies a total of twenty-five parking spaces on this site for trucks. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I have correspondence that I can read as well.
Sure, if you wanna read that out?
From our engineering department, in accordance with your request, the engineering division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time, but would like to note the following items. One, the subject parcels assigned the address of three two 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 five Schoolcraft Road. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact this department once approvals have been obtained. The, two, the existing parcel is currently serviced by public sanitary sewer and water main. The submittal does not include any proposed utility information or calculations, so we cannot comment on any proposed impacts to the existing system. But we do believe the proposed usage will, but we do not believe the proposed usage will adversely affect the existing utilities. Three, although the submittal does not include any utility information, it should be noted that any proposed redevelopment, such as removing or replacing the parking area, will be required to provide stormwater improvements and detention per the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. This is signed David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From the fires marshal, the office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with this, with a request to operate an outdoor truck and trailer storage facility on the property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations. One, if area is secured by fencing and mechanical gate, entry inside the gated area by emergency vehicles shall be assessed via a key code, code, FOB, or key with such operations to be secured in a Knox box. Two, provided locations of closest fire hydrants for the area on an official plan set. A further detailed review of this will take place when the division receives an official plan set. Signed Brian Kukula, Fire Marshal. From the police department, I have reviewed the plans in connection with this petition. I have no objections to the proposal. Signed Paul Walters of the Traffic Bureau. From the Department of Inspection, pursuant to the request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. One, the parking lot shall be continually maintained in satisfactory, satisfactory conditions so as to be safe, attractive, and free of hazards, nuisances, or, or other unsafe conditions. The department has no further objections to this petition. Signed Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. And finally, from the accounting department, I have reviewed the address connected with the above noted petition. The following amounts are due to the city of Livonia. Unpaid water and sewer charges of seven hundred and forty, seven hundred and forty dollars and eleven cents. This is signed Connie Kupla, Chief Accountant. That is all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Uhazie. Any questions for our staff? I don't see any. Mr. Uhazie, just a quick question. This has been a existing non-conforming use for a long time, this outdoor storage here, is that correct?
Correct.
And it was just discovered and they're just trying to get this cleared up, right?
Correct.
Okay, very good, thank you. Our petitioner is in the audience, I believe. If you're, if you can, please come forward to our podium. Good evening. Well, I'll ask you, start with your name and address.
Yes, good evening, everybody. My name is Angelo Zanis. I am with Seaway Realty Properties LLC. We are the building owners of three two 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 five Schoolcraft.
Good evening, Mr. Zanis. Anything else that you'd like to tell us about this request?
Yes, there was an outstanding water bill that was paid on, I believe, March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five, and I have the receipt showing that. So actually, would like me to provide a copy to you guys if I can.
No, that's fine. Yeah, actually, Ms. Reese can grab that, and we'll just make that part of our packet.
Okay.
Our record. Thank you.
And then there were two items that you guys wanted us to address last week at the study session. One of them was the damaged block wall on the southeast corner. I've reached out to our masonry contractor last week. He will be meeting me out there this week to take a look at it. It's about nine square feet of block. Should be a simple fix there to patch that up. I also reached out to our fence contractor regarding that last hundred feet fence on the southeast corner as well, which was bowed out and leaning because of large concrete blocks that were existing there from previous tenants. They don't see any issue in getting those fixed. We will have to get a contractor to, with large machinery, to move those concrete blocks away from the fence, which caused the issue in the first place. And then at that point, our fencing contractor will come, reset the poles, straighten the fence, and everything should be good.
Excellent. Well, thank you for addressing some of those concerns that came up at the study meeting.
Yes.
Let's see if there's any other questions for you on this petition. Is there any questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair, I've only got one. First of all, let me say thanks for following up on the things we, we talked about last week, because that's, that's nice when a petitioner comes and actually addresses the things we've talked about or, or has plans to address. That's a, that's a nice thing to hear. The question I've got for you is, the vehicles you're gonna park on this property, trucks, trailers, are they all gonna be licensed vehicles?
Yes, they are.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yep.
And then just going, oh, sorry, and then just going back to any of the repairs that we make, if you guys want us to provide invoices, we're happy to do that, or pictures. That's excellent. We appreciate that. And this goes on to, if this moves on to City Council, you'll, you can always provide that information to them as well.
Okay.
That'll help sort of seal those, those items up, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for our petitioner? Anyone in our audience wishing to speak on this item? Anything else you'd like to say before we make our decision?
Nope, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Zanis. Let's close the public hearing at this time, and a motion is in order.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Caremagna?
Approving resolution that the request to operate an outdoor truck and trailer facility at three two 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 five Schoolcraft Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval and the following conditions. Number one, that the plan dated February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, prepared by AP Donin, Inc., is approved and hereby, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that the maximum number of semi-trucks and semi-trailers parked on the site shall not exceed twenty-five. Number three, that all semi-truck and trailer storage shall be restricted to the confined area of the property as shown in the proposed plan. Number four, storage within the storage area shall be limited to semi-trucks and semi-trailers as shown on the approved plan. Any other special trade contractor or businesses wishing to occupy or lease space on the property for the outside storage of equipment, vehicles, or materials that differ from what is shown in the plan shall first obtain approval from the planning commission before obtaining a zoning compliance permit and certificate of occupancy from the city of Livonia Inspection Department and Fire Marshal. That there shall be no outdoor storage of disabled or inoperative equipment and vehicles, scrap metal, debris, or other similar items. Number six, there should be no storage of flammable, explosive, radioactive, hazardous, toxic, or volatile substances upon the premises. Number seven, that no minor repairs or maintenance work on the vehicles or trailers shall be conducted on the site. Number eight, that the petitioner shall submit a letter of understanding signed by the petitioner and the owner of the underlying real estate indicating that this waiver use will be voluntarily abandoned in the case the petitioner moves from the premises. Number eight, that the specific plan referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time permits are applied for. And number ten, pursuant to section one three point one three of the Livonia zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the time of the date approved by City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Caremagna, supported by Mr. Long. Is there any discussion on the motion? Would the maker be interested in adding any condition in regards to the repair of the wall or fence that just be done to the satisfaction of the planning department? Or are you okay with?
Well, I'm comfortable with the way he presented himself tonight, but we can add that the, that the block wall and the, and the fence needs to repair prior to approval.
Okay. You're okay with that?
Yep.
Very good. Excellent. If there's no other discussion on this approving resolution, then if the secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chair, Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Dinaro?
Aye.
Chairman Wilshaw?
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to City Council on approving recommendation. Thank you and for coming tonight. All right, thanks. And also, we will note that Mr. Ventura is returning to the dais, and we can move on to item number three on our agenda.
Number three is petition two zero two five dash zero three dash zero two dash zero eight. This is submitted by Wade Shows, Inc., requesting waiver use approval under sections three point one one and six point five six of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended to conduct a carnival in the parking lot of the former Sears, sponsored by Livonia AM Rotary Club, consisting of amusement rides, games, and food concessions from May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five through June eighth, two thousand twenty-five, on the property two nine five zero zero Seven Mile Road, located on the northwest corner of Seven Mile Road and Middle Belt Roads in the southeast quarter of section two.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Uhazie?
Thank you. This is the petition to conduct the annual carnival at the parking lot of the former Sears site, located on the northwest corner of Seven Mile and Middle Belt Road, with the current zoning of C two. And the surrounding neighborhoods include Livonia Marketplace, which is zoned C two to the west. North across St. Martin's Avenue is commercial zoning of C one and C two in Nottingham Village Condos of, which is zoned NM one. East across Middle Belt is the commercial area zoned C two and C one. And south across Seven Mile Road is the Mid Seven Shopping Center zoned C two. Wave, our operation of a carnival is allowed with waiver use approval subject to section six point five six of the zoning ordinance. Carnivals may be allowed for periods not to exceed two weeks. The proposed carnival will be for twenty-one days. There is an exception that maybe the petitioner may request an optional time extension of up to two weeks from the planning department. As mentioned, this would run from May nineteenth through June eighth, twenty twenty-five. The proposed hours of operation would be Monday through Friday from four P M. to eleven P M. and weekends, Saturday and Sunday, from noon to eleven P M. On Monday, June ninth, the carnival would be closed, broken down, and moved to the next location. The carnival area, which measures approximately six hundred and sixty feet east to west, and then three hundred and twenty feet north to south. It would be the same layout used for the past several years. The north limit of the carnival would be the main drive aisle that extends across the Sears parking lot and provides ingress and egress from Middle Belt to Livonia Marketplace. The western boundary is the Sears property line adjacent to the Livonia Marketplace. Overall, operation would consist of two main components. The west component would be labeled as the, on the plan as RV parking and would be temporarily housing and storage of all their trucks and equipment associated with the carnival. The east component labeled Carnival Midway would contain the rides and midways. And then with that, Mr. Chairman, I have some correspondence.
Sure, if you'd like to read those out?
From the engineering department, in accordance with your request, the engineering division has reviewed the above referenced waiver use approval request. The address two nine five zero zero Seven Mile Road is correct for the subject parcel and should be used in connection with this petition. We have no objections to the proposed petition, although the following items should be noted. One, should the carnival have the need to occupy or should any of the associated activities impact either of the Seven Mile Road or Middle Belt Road right-of-way? A permit from the Wayne County, from Wayne County would be required as both roads are under their jurisdiction. Two, all sanitary sewage from the site, recreational vehicles or campers shall be disposed of properly. Three, should the operators need to have water provided to their facilities, they should contact the city of Livonia Water Department to obtain the proper equipment, including a water meter with backflow preventer. This is signed Dave Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From our fire department, the office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a request for a carnival on the property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations. All stipulations listed below need to free from deficiencies prior to opening to the public. One, rides must be certified and stickered as compliant by the state of Michigan and verified by this division prior to the official open date and public use of carnival rides. Two, current and certified fire extinguishers must also be openly accessible for each amusement ride. Three, food trailers with suppression systems for cooking need to be certified and tagged. Cleaning of suppression systems need to be current and tagged as such. K extinguisher type to be present and certified. Signed Brian Kukula, Fire Marshal. I have reviewed, this is from the chief, or the police department, I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have no objection to the proposal. Signed Paul Walters of the Traffic Bureau. From our inspection department, pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. One, permits and inspections will be required for the proposed carnival. Prior to filling the required permits, a pre-event meeting will be required with the Director of Inspection, Fire Marshal, and Public Emergency Manager. This department has no further objections to this petition. Signed Jerome Hannah. And finally, from our accounting department, I have reviewed the address connected with the above noted petition. As there are no outstanding amounts receivable, I have no objection to the proposal. Signed Connie Kupla. With that, Mr. Chair, is all I have.
Very good, thank you. Is there any questions for staff? I don't see any questions. Our petitioner is in the audience. Feel free to come forward. Good evening, Ms. Hardesty.
Good evening.
Welcome.
It's good to be here. Good to see you all again.
Yes, good to see you again. And what would you like to tell us about your carnival?
I just have one thing. We did petition for May nineteenth through June eighth. May nineteenth is when we will be on-site setting up. We won't actually open the carnival until Thursday, May twenty-second. So it's a few, few days shorter than the, the original application. I just wanted to make sure we were covered, that you were aware that we would be there a few days earlier setting up than...
Breaking down.
Yes, and breaking down on Monday. We get out of here a lot quicker than we set up.
Funny how that works. All right, and this is a routine carnival that you hold for fundraiser for the Rotary Club?
Yes. I think this is our tenth year, maybe our eleventh year.
I've lost track.
It does phenomenal fundraiser for us, and as you know, we give a lot back to the community.
Okay, excellent.
Actually, all of it.
Well, let's see if there's any questions for you on this. Any questions for our petitioner? Going once, going twice. I don't see any questions. There is no one left in the audience that'll speak on this item, I don't think. So anything else that you'd like to tell us before we make our decision?
No, just thank you again for considering us for this event, 'cause it is a very, very big fundraiser for the Rotary Club, and we're happy to be a part of it. And we love Livonia, you know that.
Very much so. Okay, well, we appreciate your support in our community as well. You've certainly worked in our community for a long time, putting on carnivals, both at this location and others as well, so... If there's no other questions or comments, then a motion would be in order.
I'll make, I'll make the motion. I'll offer an approving resolution.
Okay.
This request to conduct a carnival sponsored by the Livonia AM Rotary Club in the parking lot of the former Sears at two nine five zero zero Seven Mile Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval and the following conditions. One, the carnival shall be limited from May nineteen, twenty twenty-four, through June eighth. Nope, that's wrong. The carnival shall be limited from May nineteen, twenty twenty-five, through June eighth, twenty twenty-five. Number two, the carnival shall be confined to the areas illustrated on the plan received by the planning commission. Number three, all rides, food concessions, booths, and other equipment and apparatus related to the carnival operation shall be at least sixty feet from the right-of-ways of Seven Mile and Middle Belt Roads. Number four, the temporary housing and storage of trucks and equipment associated with the carnival shall be in the property's southwest corner as shown...
carnival shall be in the property's southwest corner as shown on the plan, no closer than sixty feet from the right-of-way of Seven Mile Road. Number five, the hours of operation shall be limited to Monday through Friday from four PM to eleven PM, and on Saturday and Sunday from twelve PM to eleven PM. And number six, permits and inspections are required. Wade Shows shall request a pre-event meeting with the Director of Inspection, the Fire Marshal, and emergency preparedness. Subject to the preceding conditions, this petition is approved for the following reasons. Number one, the proposed use complies with all special and general waiver use standards and requirements outlined in section six point five six and thirteen dot one three of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended. Number two, the site can accommodate the proposed use. Number three, the carnival shall not disrupt the normal traffic flow and circulation in the area and will not impede access to neighboring properties. And finally, number four, no reporting city department objects to the proposed use.
Thank you, Ms. Dinaro, and also a good catch on the date there.
Yep.
Is there support for this petition?
Support.
All right, we have a petition to approve made by Ms. Dinaro and supported by Mr. Ventura. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Ms. Dinaro?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Karen Magna says aye. Chair Willschau?
Votes aye, and motion passes. We'll go to city council with approving recommendation, and good luck with your carnival today, this year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
With that, we, that includes the public hearing section of our agenda. We now have the approval of minutes, Mr. Secretary.
Yes, the approval of the minutes of the one thousand two hundred and twenty-seventh public hearing and regular meeting held by the planning commission on March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
All members that are here tonight were present at that meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Dinaro, supported by?
Long.
I got Mr. Long first. Is there any discussion or objection to showing five on that? I see no objections. We'll show five on that to approve. And that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the commission? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
By Ms. Dinaro and support by?
We'll support that one.
Mr. Ventura. And again, if there's no objection, I think we can safely show five to adjourn this meeting. I see no objections. We will be adjourning the meeting tonight at seven fifty-three PM. I do want to thank Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting to the community and wish a good night to the City of Livonia. Good night.